I'd like to follow the order of both City Council and City Commissioners meeting today with the October 7th, we all rise from your face in the air by the A.L. point and now I'll say the lead.
Goodness, power heads and fairies, Father of heaven, how we love you. We lift your name on all the earth. May the kingdom be established in our praises, as your people declare your mighty words. Heavenly Father, we do lift our forces up to you in praise. And Lord, we come to you with hearts filled with gratitude for all that you've done for us. Lord, each of us has a story about the wonderful and miraculous work you've done in our lives. And we want to say thank you. Father, tonight we ask for the blessing that you gave to your King Solomon. You told him to ask for what he wanted, and you would give it to him. And he asked for wisdom. And your word tells us to ask for wisdom, and the Lord will graciously give it. So Father, I pray that tonight, each of these commissioners and the mayor will ask for wisdom, Lord, as we pray for them, that they will judge rightly and rule rightly and make good by those decisions, for everything that affects this community, which affects us all. Thank you so much for your great love for us and your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I plead with allegiance to the new life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, everybody, to be glad to come out for our meeting tonight. Commissioners, there is additional reason to our attendance in that.
The Mayor, I have called one item under the City Attorney's Office, and that is to consider a musical of the S. program between the city, Georgia Pacific, Hercules, and the Maxwell Incorporated, that fell in the S.I.N.U.S., I believe, Maxwell.
Motion to second for an amendment to the City Attorney's Item. Then the further discussion on that. And we got all evidence to say it. All right, then being a little further discussion, all those who fail, please raise your hand. All right, that motion carries now for the added item number 10A on the City Attorney's Item. Any other? Okay, thank you. Well, we will begin further comment here. We have one individual signed up for further comment. That is Ms. Monica Smith. Ms. Smith, please take your time and also your address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Monica Smith, 61 Maxwell Avenue, Houston, San Antonio, Georgia. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the municipal City Commission, I'm Monica Smith, some members have a lot. I'm sure you can maybe refer to myself as an agitator, and today I'm here in an agitated state, agitated by the recovery condition into which our waterfront has been allowed to fall by agents of government who have proved to distribute over our assets and resources. While there is some question about exactly which public body has tended to some 14 parcels along the city's southern water flow, there's no question that the mayor's quick terminal and University of Georgia facility are the only ones that pass upon condition. Whether or not the city runs or covers four parcels, as the new cabinet's information system indicates, my inquiries at the Environmental Protection Division and the Watershed Protection Division are to the Department of Natural Resources and the Georgia Sports Authority itself have convinced me that no state agency is equipped or prepared to set adequate standards for air and water quality and to see that they are enforced through construction, operation, or maintenance activities. The Georgia Sports Authority does its own building inspection and hires consultants to prepare stormwater and wastewater plants, which in my opinion are vastly useless because they don't actually prevent contamination and discharge into our water and air. Over the police hold, such as Blackwater and Mouda Steck, the Georgia Sports Authority exercises no supervision. Indeed, the record of air pollution violations Mouda Steck acquired even before its now heard pilots went into the flames in Orion this year and struck up sending streams of pollution into the East River and stretching the capacity of our water utility to the breaking point suggests that the Sports Authority has been maintaining a public nuisance which an individual landlord such as myself could not get away with. Given the vast resources of the state of Georgia, not to mention the profitability of the Georgia Sports Authority has reported in press releases, we can expect more and better quality from this public enterprise than from an individual private owner. Ownership, like citizenship, implies obligation in any case. However, since only one of the 13 Georgia Sports Authority water directors lives in a coastal county, we should probably not be surprised that the authority has no interest in the health and welfare of the residents of the city, the county, or our waterways. The agency's brochure suggests what's important to the Georgia Sports Authority about Brunswick is that cargo rolls in and rolls out quickly. Their mission is to see that global trade and even the American heartland are well-served. It's not garbage in and garbage out per se, but that's only because the proposals to transfer container waste garbage for a new year company seems to have gone nowhere. While the Georgia Sports Authority has no interest in air quality, water quality, or the structural integrity of the facilities, our state Environmental Protection Division is overextended monitoring fuel wastewater plants and 800 drinking water wells in the coastal district of Moore. In addition, the Watershed Protection Branch has issued over 2,600 stormwater permits for which it has sufficient staff to inspect between only 50 and 100 a year, mostly unsuspecting response to complaints from people like our own James Holland. Indeed, complaints, it turns out, are indispensable because the annual reports that permit holders are supposed to compile aren't actually turned over to the E.P.D. unless there's an oral request to inspect a specific permit. In other words, nobody's compiling files or collecting data on what actually does and doesn't work. So unless the city requires appropriations for construction permits, electrical permits, utility hookups, and the submission of detailed plans, we can't know what's on and under the ground, nor what's going to spew more pollutants into our air and water. And let me just conclude by saying the best government is not one that governs least, but one that responds to what we citizens need and puts your strength on what we citizens feel what. It's not nice for the G.P.A. to treat our harbor like an elementary town. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Please leave a copy of your comments for our City Attorney's and our City Attorney's Board, they can take a look at what's going on over there. Thank you so very much. And then with any other people signed up? No? Okay. All right, moving right along, recognition of presentation awards. I do have more population presentation to choose, the Rio Basin, Vice President of South Georgia Health System and Support of Breast Cancer awareness. My son, if you get it to be a very big thing, it was my very biggest.
Yes, I'm a patient. This is Dr. Patty Pratt.
Hello, how are you?
Dr. Pratt is the leader of Allied Health Services at Compostel Health Center. She's here representing Susan, who becomes a really big and very important, is supportive recommendation of breast cancer. And this is Barton, Barton Castle.
How are you?
And she's the executive director for Compostel American Society here in Orange.
Well, we got a big lead on the other. I just want to read a population about this. We are looking support, support very much of a big stamp. If anything we can do that we can support to make that a better, a better standpoint of this government standpoint. Let me read this and then we'll move along. Mayor, City Council, Southern Georgia population, whereas now over 230,000 women and men are diagnosed with breast cancer each year. And in 2015, breast cancer continues to be a common cause of cancer in Southeast Georgia region. And whereas October, the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, with the aim of increasing awareness of the disease and facilitating research into causes, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and cure. And whereas the health and well-being of our community are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness and education regarding breast cancer, and from encouraging our citizens to take actions to lower their risk of developing the disease. Now therefore, I go in there hard with all my fellow City Commissioners, Commissioner Vincent T. Williams, Commissioner Julie Martin, Commissioner Johnny Casey, Mayor Fortell and Commissioner Harris. I join in Southeast Georgia Health System, Susan G. Coleman, Coastal Georgia affiliate, American Cancer Society, and community across Southeast Georgia, for playing Friday, October 9th, 2015, as Pinkout Friday. And by encouraging all citizens to wear pink on this day to increase awareness of this disease, to show support and recognition to our neighbors, family, and friends who have been impacted by breast cancer, and to take an active role in helping to make breast cancer a part of our past and not our future, and not our community's future either. And sign our meeting for the Harvey, attest by the only evidence, I'll see you later.
Well, we'd like to encourage everyone to wear pink on Friday, as we can go around the community, it's hard to find an individual that hasn't been impacted by breast cancer, either personally or through your family, your friends, and your neighbors. There are over 300 people currently alive that have been impacted by breast cancer personally. So Friday is about security, neighbors, our friends, and our family, and I would love to see us painted red. Thank you so much for your support.
I couldn't. I'm not here to mess it up. Thank you all, and thank you. Okay, item number two, population presentation, the City of Southern Fire Department, in support of Fire Prevention Week, receiving I.S.O. rating of one. This Fire Department is doing something here. Tell them, say your welcome, Fire Department, come on out. First of all, Chief, I want to thank you all, and thank you for all you have to do for our city, and also Fire, Fireman? Firefighter? For, because, I understand, you're out there. Also, I want to thank you all for what you did, putting that fire down, for having a really, really good response, and you fixed up with it to clean it out. You told us that you provide safety for our, for our community, and we're so proud of you to be in our city of origin. Thank you so much. The analogy of population is fine, but this is fine Firefighter. And then I have to speak for a second about I.S.O. rating that we received, that this Fire Department received. And it's the one rating that not very many Fire Department will see that, and I'll chief to speak to that at my finish. And this is a population, says the Mayor, the City Council of Southern Georgia, do anybody issue this population? Says whereas the City of Long is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Long, and whereas Fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, their homes are in a location where people are at greater risk. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in a port, home fires attack. And whereas when fire alarms should have operated but did not do so, it was usually because batteries were missed, disconnected, or dead. And whereas Long's residents should install smoke alarm in every, in every sleeping room outside east and south sleeping area and on every level of the home. Whereas Long's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention, protection, and education. And whereas in 2005, excuse me, 2015, Fire Prevention Week theme, here to be, where you sleep, every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm, here to be, where you sleep. Effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us time to get out safely. Now therefore, I go in there hard with long, fellow City Commissioners, do anybody claim October 4th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Long, urging all citizens to install smoke alarm in every bedroom outside east sleeping area and on every level of their home, as supporting minimum public safety activities and efforts of Brother Fire and Versus Services during Fire Prevention Week 2015. We also recommend Brother's Fire Department for being designated as I.S.O. rating one, along with Liam Long's 911 Communications Center and the Brother Liam Joint Board of Sewer Committee for their part. The I.S.O. rating one designated, which will ultimately help our citizens and businesses save on fire insurance policy. And this sign by me for the Harvey Mayor, attest by the neighbor and our city clerk, give these Fire Fighters a hand. First of all, I saw one.
Mayor, Commissioner, I appreciate everything you've got to do for the population here. We do a lot of talking for this, it's small part of our, I still may, but we can stop fires before they start and save lives before we have a fire. We've done our job. These guys are, twelve of them are suppression guys, and twelve of them are prevention guys. I don't see today coming, we only have two suppression guys, two prevention guys. And you put prevention number one, Class One I, so we can say five. Class One rating exists, I've been before, but there are only 97 apartments, last time I checked, in the United States, half that class one isolation. That's the only rating skill that I know of for fire departments. I know about 50,000 certified fire departments, and this is pretty difficult to say. I wish I could take someone dreadful, who is in fire marshal, fire inspector, deputy chiefs, and captains, and firefighters, and engineers, they did all the work. They wanted to do it, and they said, go ahead, let's do it, and they did. Forty percent of that I.S.O. class one rating goes to my own for the Sewer Committee, which is just more, and they do a pretty big job on that. Firefighters do a big part of that also, they test over 700 firefighters in the city every year, and do a water system, they extend a couple of good all hours, so keep a couple of good, we did that day's. Ten percent of our communications department, our dispatch department, they almost have a perfect score, I agree with you. And just thank you for recognizing the firefighters, and Heather's been for being, and giving it a service, and just talk. He and our number one goal that we try to accomplish is, is no fires. We want to put ourselves out of business, but we have a smoke protect program and a battery program. Anybody in the city of Long, if they use smoke protect, and they're all really strong for it. That also, and we will be dragged every year and donating to places like Walmart, we just got, those on Echo, and you have to go out and gather these presents, but we get to a good, to provide those fire departments for, I mean, smoke protect into the homes of the city of Long. Also, if anybody needs batteries, we have plenty of batteries. We just got a minute, I was already, a minute, I'll be, I'll hold batteries for the smoke protect. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, sir. Now Firefighters, we, when it's often, help the search, obviously, they do a lot, they do great things for our city, they are the only agency that goes the harm's way to make sure that we are safe. They do it, they care about us, care about our community. All right, item number three, boss, Kate Ladder, Detective Director, Brain Reconnect give a presentation on the repercussions of stroke and brain impairment.
Thank you so much for letting us talk to you, we really appreciate it. I'm Wes Layler, Executive Director of Brain Reconnect, which is a non-profit, 501(c)(3) organization for those who suffer from stroke and brain impairment. This is Rhonda Anne, she's my Assistant Director, and this is Graham Layler, and he's also a board member. We so appreciate it. We actually had a mayor at our one meetings last month, and so enjoyed, and wanted to let them know some of our commission and more about our members. We have a very definite mission statement. Mission statement is in the brochure. It states that we're a non-profit, 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to providing education, resources, and continued therapy opportunities many times after insurance benefits have ended. Brain Reconnect Ape is devoted to those who are struggling with the adverse effects of stroke and brain impairment, as well as their families, caregivers, and friends. The support group is committed to creating a non-intimidating, comfortable environment providing friendship, camaraderie, and hope so that group members can reengage with others and the community through facilitated interaction promoting recovery after the crisis time of a medical event. We live in stroke out, we are alone. We have 125 members so far on our email list, we meet once a month, we have 50 to 60 people that attend our meetings. Our meetings are normally educational, but we also have social events. We've got so big, we hardly handle it. We need a place to be. Are asking everyone to consider having, consider us, giving us a building, and that was one of the reasons why we're here. We want to have a place where people can go and get away from isolation. Isolation and depression is something that hits stroke and brain impairment, and that's what I'm here for.
We have lots of activities that we do to promote, we find every year an educational event for the community. We had a show this year, the good theater made a movie that was very well acclaimed in favor, which included some stroke patients with brain impairment. Folks have their speech, had great turnout with the rest, we had folks from Brooklyn Volition, from Central Florida come up to see that, it was very well attended. And as far as the first major event this night to highlight stroke and brain impairment is, we try to do something like that every year on a grand scale for the community, as well as our monthly meetings for our group. We also have events where we get our group members and their families out of the community. As you always said, isolation is one of the biggest problems for these folks. We had that on Larry Babel's book a few weeks ago, we just tried a challenge, but it went well.
Run.
And these people, many of them are struggling, they're on basically transportation issues, which I know is a problem for many, getting to R.E.D.s and events and issues. And R.E.D.s get these guys out and get together so they can talk with each other about their problems and challenges and to socialize. They have events, you know, we've had funded by various organizations, where they can do some pottery classes, where they can get out, be together, do some recreational things, creative things. Many of the group are folks just like you and I, they're professionals, they're musicians, they're creative people, that have no habit anymore, they're kind of trying. We truly are in a very large area of folks that suffer from brain and stroke impairment. We would very, very, very help if anybody could do this and in terms of getting a location dedicated to these folks, so our programs going, we have many opportunities to add to programs, for these people if we were to have it dedicated to them.
Some of the opportunities in the building that we have would be a game room, do you like to use horticulture, have culinary events, do you like to use different types of exercises, chi, no doubt, educational type? of exercises, I'm cheap, know about educational types of speakers, and just a place that they should be raised.
And I'd like to add too that stroke is the fifth leading hall of death in the United States, and it is deeply caused of long-term disability in the United States. As Roy's mentioned before, we are the buckle of the stroke bill. So, there's probably not a person in this room who has not been touched in some way by a stroke or brain impairment. So, these, these are our, our family members, our husbands, wives, children, we have a young toddler in our region, in fact, and three years old, three years old. And as someone who lives with a person in my household that had a stroke at age forty-nine when I was young, the isolation that these people experience is probably the biggest impediment to recovery, and it is a detriment. And I'm from Lee County, Brunswick is my home, we were born and raised here, and we've never had an organization until Brain Reconnect addresses these students after the medical crisis. When people go home, they say, "Now, how do I live my life now?" And so, Mr. Mayor, if we could ask for your help in any way, we would serve everything.
Well, thank you for coming and sharing with us and giving us information about, you're right, most of us have been affected somehow, or know someone who's affected by stroke. So, the other point, and your organization is helping, putting our bells on back to a functional, loving manner, so get on your lives, help us raise them, so I appreciate that very much. We will take that, like I said, we have to take a look at it, you know, we know that we provide a vital service to our community, and, you know, give some time to it.
I agree.
Thank you. Item number four, Janie Everett, CEO, President of Thicke Hall Memorial Project Corporation, give a presentation on the history of Thicke Hall chemical plant explosion.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Harvey, and the members of the City Council. My name is Janie Everett, I live at Palm Seven North Drive, Goodbye, Georgia. I'm here this evening to address you about the Thicke Hall to preserve the history and legacy of the former Thicke Hall chemical plant located on Harris Club in Goodbye. We have established a certified 501(c)(3) community-based organization, the Thicke Hall Memorial Project Inc. Our mission is to remember and honor the twenty-nine Thicke Hall plant workers that perished in the plant explosion of February third, nineteen seventy-one, to recognize and honor the resilience of those who survived, the courage of those that risked their lives, and the compassion of all that supported the rescue and recovery effort, to recognize the patriotic contribution made to our nation by the Thicke Hall plant workers, and preserve their share of this history. But these were the workers that manufactured into these return gas, trip gas, and munitions for our fighting force on the ground in Vietnam. We'd like to educate our young people about the pride these workers took in their work, their resilience in times of peril, and their unwavering commitment to fulfill America's favorite obligation to our soldiers' body in Vietnam. We do affirm that may the lives remembered, the deeds recognized, and the human spirit of oneness which overcame devastation, inspired hope, provoked freedom, and affirm that each life is a gift worthy of respect and honor. Toward that end, we plan to host a forty-fifth anniversary ceremony on February third, twenty sixteen. And we shall raise funds to plan, build, and endow a monument, education center, and museum to honor the workers, first responders, and medical care facilities by the fiftieth anniversary of twenty twenty-one. As with this historical event, the City of Brunswick is foremost in responding to the call of humanity. I'm here tonight to say thank you to you, the City of Brunswick, and the County of Glen, for that act of service on February third, nineteen seventy-one. It was your police department's courageous actions during the rescue and recovery effort that saved the lives of many. Your community's acts of compassion replace despair with hope. We are extremely grateful for your good deeds and service. I'm here tonight to thank Mayor Harvey and members of the Brunswick City Council for their endorsement of support for this cause. Also, I'm here to thank you for accepting our invitation as an honorary to attend the forty-fifth anniversary commemorative ceremony. The event is free to the public, and all is invited. We hope that future will be able or permitted to attend this ceremony. The ceremony is an opportunity for us as a community and a nation to pay homage to our fallen patriots, the survivors, and the unhealing heroic patriots and patriots. For the sake of our young people, we must allow ourselves to remember the lives our people lived. Their lives were not a popular slogan, God, country, and family. They lived a life that reflected the true American values and priorities. Some of the workers lived in the City of Brunswick. To date, there are still several survivors of the explosion and plant workers that live in the City of Brunswick in Glen County. Mrs. April Williams worked in building M-132, she is a survivor of the explosion. Mr. Julius Walker, one of the longtime employees of the plant, still lives in Glen County. We need to capture the oral history of these patriots and share it with our young people. Their untold story is a story of courage and commitment to serving the greater good. If you were to examine the three men records of eighteen seventy, you will find no women or children of color were free. For ninety-four years, all women of this country were subject to the men. The best future they could look forward to was to marry well. In nineteen sixty-four, with the passing of the Civil and Equal Rights Amendment, freedom and opportunity was gained by all genders. With this new opportunity, these women, the Thicke Hall plant workers, left the fields picking tomatoes, cucumbers, and corn, and joined hand in hand with their male counterparts and transform, and transform the region from plantation area into an industrial economy. They improved the quality of life of their family and their community. Non-wage was a dollar sixty an hour. They were making a dollar eighty-five to two twenty-nine per hour. No more day work, making two dollars per day. They invented the two-income household while manufacturing the munitions for the United States Army. On that fateful day, on February third, helicopter-powered pilot John Rivers of St. Simon Island, and police officer Calvin Wade, and the Brunswick Fire Police Department responded to what is now recorded as the worst disaster in the history of southeastern Georgia and is ranked tenth worst industrial disaster in the last one hundred years in the United States. Brunswick Memorial Hospital was one of the eight hospitals to provide emergency medical care. The joint emergency response was historic. Fourteen cities, eight hospitals, Georgia Department of State Police, numerous city fire and police departments, Georgia Forestry Commission, United States Army, Navy, and Coast Guard, all responded without a hat or no emergency response plan in place. This is quintessential example of how the human spirit triumphed over total devastation. There are existing historical documents that clarify this history. You can, you can support this effort by simply checking your historical files for emergency dispatch documents, and letters of appreciation written to the City of Brunswick in this important asset in response to the explosion. Letters such as those from Lieutenant Governor Lester Maddox, Major General Van Iver of the Georgia Department of Defense, Southern Division, and Thicke Hall CEO J.W. Wittens addressed the cities and responding fire departments. This telegram, this telegram came from President Nixon. I provided a copy of it with the, with your clerk. We need these documents. We know that documents exist because I have seen some of the documents that went to different fire departments, and we're just asking that wherever they are, that they're uncovered so that we can preserve them for the future use in the museum or the education center for our children. We ask that the city would partner with other elected officials, officials responding of responding cities in Camden County to establish a task force to determine the feasibility of the creation of a Thicke Hall National Monument. We have, and I give the copy to the clerk, we have two monuments in Camden County. One of them, yesterday, we went out and restored. Can I pass this up? We have two existing monuments in Camden County, one at April Ford Park that was erected in nineteen eighty-one, and one at the former Rockland High School erected in nineteen seventy-one. And what has happened is, we went yesterday with help of the community, we cleaned all of the brush around that wanted to make a full park, and we landscaped it. So, what we're not, we're not asking for another monument with the names of the twenty-four people of patriots that lost their lives. What we're asking for is a monument that depicts their contribution, a national monument education museum under the National Park Service. So, we ask that leadership to study this, the possibility that this can be done. We ask that you support the proclamation to declare February the third, and may every members of the Thicke Hall plant workers, and to support the February third, ten fifty-three moment of silence observance and resolution being placed before the Georgia General Assembly sponsored by Senator Leggins and Representative Jason Spencer. We ask that you access our website at www.thickehallmemorial.org and register to attend the forty-fifth anniversary ceremony and make a donation to the cause. This, this is a vast history with many varied aspects of who we are as a people entwined within it. Yet the one thing that's a great revelation that we cannot forget is that this freedom we are so blessed to live, and the quality of life we enjoy was all paid forward for by the sacrifice of people that came before us. We are the direct beneficiary of the lessons learned from the Thicke Hall disaster. So, while blocking line ninety-five, say thank you. When you need medical assistance and dial nine-one-one, and the fire engine and ambulance race to your home, say thank you. Should you have occasion to go into a manufacturing or industrial plant anywhere in this nation, and you observe the safety guidelines posted and safety measures taken, say thank you. And if you ever have an occasion to be involved in a mass tort litigation in federal court, say thank you. It took seventeen years for the workers to be told what caused the accident, the Thicke Hall. For seventeen years of their life, they woke up thinking, oh, wonder, could I have done something to cause the death of our coworkers? They had a fight for seventeen years to be heard, and it was settled right here in the City of Brunswick at the federal court. The Justice Department had to rewrite mass tort litigation because no one knew how to value life and make compensation. Therefore, families of nine eleven victims did not have to endure that struggle because case law based on litigation, on this litigation, Thicke Hall litigation, was there. By the way, that well-developed emergency response plan is a direct lesson learned from the Thicke Hall disaster. The greatest gift given to us by the people of this era was their permission to dream. They inspired our willingness to mend us to work toward our dreams. They made us believe in ourselves, and they ignited a flame of hope. Together, we can pass this gift to the next generation. Please join us as we honor and pay tribute to our people of courage, the Thicke Hall plant workers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Really appreciate that. Our city attorney and city manager have that information. I'd like to thank you for the education you've given us tonight. Didn't want to interrupt you when you were gone, because you didn't educate us as well as to what happened and what's happened. Hope there was a little help in our future. Okay, we need to move right on. Item number five, Scott Lutz, Chairman of Historic Preservation Board with the district's commission regarding sidewalk improvements.
Give me a second because it takes longer than that. Hopefully, the old Tatters card number packed, Matthew's also seeing, can you give a little bit of a background update from the historic preservation board? We've been working over the last year really, and trying to develop, put together an actual plan for the historic district. What do we want the district to look like? We used that as a quote of the line. And at our last training sessions we went to, I learned a lot that a lot of other communities don't believe. They have historic districts, but they don't really have a point of them having the commissions like we have here. The commission and us are dedicated to maintaining the integrity of historic structures within the historic district. When we talk about the sidewalks and the infrastructure, for whatever reason, it is falling through the cracks. What you have for you is a document that was prepared in nineteen ninety-nine that we set out putting together, it was put together by Jerry Spence, I'm sure all of Spence, I'm sure all of you know Jerry, quite capable and valued for what he was able to contribute to the, the district state that we have today. But for whatever reason, that plan got lost, and other decisions were made to alter the historic items within the district, mainly the sidewalks. We also have a lot of different curbing that's being lost in buildup, asphalt additions over the years that we need to address and look at. The new map that you have is something that we put together from the board, we did a number inventory of the station of sidewalks, and it's all keyed there. There are a number of places in Jerry's old map that had historic papers that are now being converted to sand concrete. This topic was mentioned in the city commission meeting several months ago, and I took that opportunity to arrange a meeting with him, Mr. Weeks, and with Rick, and had a sit-down about what was the plan for the sidewalks and where it was going. He's got a master list of the condition of the sidewalks, and he's updating those as we speak. The standpoint of the historic board, no one wants sand concrete. The integrity of it, because we're getting it out there, what was better, is not giving this a consistent look, it's not being, it's not holding the look as we had from that historic papers. It's my understanding that we have a pretty good supply of those papers, and we need to be utilizing those. The last few projects that Rick's group had put together, they have been putting the old papers back in place, and that is a consistent look that we need to maintain. There are a few areas that still maintain the original brick, and they need to be maintained. We need to maintain the infrastructure of the historic profile that we have in the city, and it needs to be something that's maintained and left. So, my concern, my vision is that you all take this plan of Jerry's, the one that we put together in nineteen ninety-nine, and make it a part of the master plan for the infrastructure in the historic district so that we can maintain those looks. in the historic district so that we can maintain those looks as we enter into adding other areas of our city. I know we've got Deadsville and Havisham Park, public comment meetings coming up here in a few weeks. Those things have to be also thought about in those areas because that is part of the historic integrity of those areas. If we start changing it and altering it, modernizing it, we lose that historic integrity. How much is life for you to take a look at this and please, if there's how we know about making sure that this becomes a part of that master plan and follow this plan while considering those infrastructure changes? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, hold on, I have a question.
Who was that? Give me a second, it takes a while.
And then you said that you, that you had gone to some training?
Yes.
And, and you discovered that some of the other cities didn't really have a vision or anything in place as far as plan. Have you all started working on one?
And this was, this was one of the first steps was to look at the infrastructure items and whatnot. What is, what, what is the, and, and Commissioner Martin and my wife and I have had discussions on other aspects of this and getting a consistent coherent appearance of things. And that's what a part of the plan needs to be. So when we look at a plan of how we want the historic district to look like, we're talking about the infrastructure. What does that infrastructure look like? And what is the historic footprint that was put down, laying down years and years and years ago? How do we maintain it? How do we keep working at it and looking at those things? We talked about the downtown state and the lights and the streets and the sidewalks and the curbing and the medians and our boulevard streets. What does that look like? And how do we get to what it was originally or where it was at in the twenties and thirties? And we took all that time to get the paint broken in and those granite curbs. I just got back from the Boston area a few weeks ago before this, Anthony. Boston and the southern northern cities are actually pulling up the concrete and putting their, their granite curbs back because they last three times as long. And then they get it out of the ground. They cut it, they put it in there, it stays in there and they don't have to do anything to it. And every time when we start taking those things out or covering them up, we lose that appearance. You've got some of the medians on New Street now that bring all this traffic and, and in the one, we've got hundreds of people from Georgia Trust coming to our city to And we've got, we've got medians out there that look okay in some places and covered up in others. And we've got to work on that, that infrastructure so that we can give it a more inherent, consistent look to those things. In our training, talking about this and asking a lot of the speakers, the folks that were there at the training, they were, they helped. We had a discussion, but nobody really had a plan that we could use to look at from a boil point to say, what do, what can we use for this? What can we aim at this? What we need to do here? So we're really kind of in the infancy of doing some of those processes. The sidewalk was the natural first step. But like I said, Jerry led us on that in nineteen ninety-nine, it's already done. It's just gotten more.
Yeah, I think this is a huge body of work and it is something that took a lot of effort to do and I applaud y'all, you know, Jerry's efforts and then Historic Preservation Board that's been working on this. And those are the things that make us unique and those are the things that Anthony's honor and character about historic district in Newtown. And we have to create new materials in that area and I think it's important to preserve those. And I'd like to see if we couldn't maybe agree as a commission to task staff to take a look at this master plan and see if it's something that we could adopt.
Well, first of all, this is, yes, for presentation and I'm sure when we last asked the manager to take a look at all this, and that's what I'm saying.
As you look at a map and you go into some of the areas on the other side of Boston Street, the Newtown area and, and, and not so much in Urbana, the southern part of Newtown, a lot of these areas come out of some of them, I said, oh. Now, some of the side streets, I don't know if they're still right or if they're, they're in sidewalks and some of them are literally narrow. But there are some of the other streets that they should have sidewalks. They need to have sidewalks. For nothing else, just to make the, the neighborhood feel like it was a people from the island itself walking along and engaging with one another.
That's the type of deal that you should have.
Yes, absolutely.
Or something, I think we'd be a town. Ruth, do we still have the capability of making the papers out of, from that?
I'm sorry, the capability of?
Do we have the capability of, of producing the octagon papers out of that four lines of, uh?
We don't currently have that. We have now suppliers that passed, uh, order, but they're very hard to find and those few finding are very expensive. But that being said, I know stamp concrete is probably not an optimal thing, but because we did stamp concrete in some areas, we took those papers and we stored those. So we do have a supply of papers that can be targeted for, for, for this. So we don't let people walk off whether they're taking away, we've been preserving all that. So there's different styles of tighter areas.
And then some of the non-research looking at there are some companies because of the papers in the district are a weird size apparently. There are some companies that are, that are making them out there and they're, and we're not the only community. This, this type of colored papers that we have in this pattern is not unique to Brunswick. Some say they did a great job in the twenties and thirties because they're all over Georgia and every city and every community has a different way of dealing with it. I talked to Rick about this and with, uh, uh, city manager Weeks, when he was here, s- some of the cities don't take any responsibility for sidewalks. That's the citizens, the homeowners responsibility. I'm a little wary about them. Those kind of things can just when you get into a mishmash where your, your idol can get all these variations that we don't have. There's all different ways of this handled.
All right, thank you for your presentation. A little question, we've got, uh, comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I have, uh, to be honest, I'm not really playing.
Yes, sir, I'll be great.
Have you driven through many of the streets of the city? There's quite a few sidewalk improvements I have to say to build. If you were to build out the fair yard, I'd have to sell a lot of that off of the road ground.
I can take a look at it. Okay, moving by the law of public hearing, land use. Item number six, resounding petition number fifteen oh one and annexation petition number fifteen oh one from David and Dowry Sula. Owner's petition to resumem Marshall, okay, at thirty-two ten Third Street from Arlen Avenue, Commerce, and annexation to City Marshall. Mr. Blazer, I see the petition presented.
Sir. Good evening to you all. This is an annexation in a recent public hearing in due to a slight pork, we're going to do something a little bit different than the, the public hearings that you normally do. Um, but to get into the petition, it is, as you see on page one, the convenience store located at thirty-three nineteen Glen Avenue, it is the city of Brunswick. You will see through the shape of the strip that's in the part of the general color, the property directly to the west of it, along East Third, thirty-two ten East Third, that is the county. It is also a zoning park, it's residential, it's, it's, the convenience store, it's vacant. They would like to put a bigger convenience store towards the back of the property where the house is now, residential structure at thirty-two ten East Third Street. There's contracts to purchase that piece of property so that homeowners are coming in and asking for their piece of property to be brought in the city of Brunswick and to use it because they can hire the person that owns it. So it's time to advertise the public hearing for the resuming and for the annexation portion of that. Page two, you will see a proposed site plan on what the new convenience store will look like. The gas pumps will stay above from the current location closer to Glen Avenue and the larger convenience store will be in approximately the location where the house is today, thirty-two ten East Third Street. We did see this with all annexations, uh, the information is still to came into the county. The county has a period of review, they have five days to get back to us to tell us if there are urban county facilities on this piece of property, there are not. They then came back and asked for two specific items, uh, referred to items and those are found on, on page three. From essence, they are asking for a tight day buffer between subject parcel and subject parcel, they extended theirs since, or another residential structure further to the west and the property of that property will be here tonight. Said that people would show up and make some comments and we'll appear for the property that's further to the west along East Third Street. He is the most effective party about this in both annexations and pre- zone. They, they is requesting a tight day buffer to be put in place along their request for that property, that'll be thirty-two ten East Third Street. So that would then buffer if the convenience store goes in, remaining residents and residents in the west. That tight day buffer, minimal twelve foot wide and it has a certain kind of quantity that's required in there. There is an alternate to that buffer, that's a dedicated twelve foot wide buffer on the bathroom, six foot tall wall in it. And that choice is really left up to the county. So those are the two points that the county made. There are a couple other items to this that will come back to you at the next meeting to accommodate a large convenience store, the law's about to be a lot combination because they want to take two properties together. There's also a commission, a huge amount of power, that initial uses for a automobile service station and gas pumps. We have a convenience store, initially not a convenience store, but initially a use is required for all the new service stations and gas, and that service stations will be open at gas pumps. So this evening, what we're asking to do, that's a whole public hearing for the pre- zone and for the annexation, we do not devote most of the resources to that because of a report in the state law that says, whole public hearing for those slides, but do not vote until later when you approve ordinance or annexation. That's the best way to accommodate that is to have a whole public hearing tonight and then direct the staff to advertise the ordinance change for the next meeting. So then you'll vote on ordinance change for the next meeting and you'll also hold a public hearing for the, for separate and also decide a lot of, in that next meeting.
So this is a, a real, uh, process we're going to do, I mean, a lot of step process. Mr. Attorney?
He's correct. Essentially, we're using all the residential site because if you guys voted on resuming the progress tonight, we can have that, the progress on the city.
Right.
So we got to have the annexation done and require ordinance being perfected.
Uh, Mr. Blazer, now the county requiring buffer between our commercial van and residential, do we require a statement?
We also require a buffer between any residential and any non-residential piece of property.
Right.
Our buffer is, uh, has a big standard to it. It says that you must have a, you know, pass a green breach after one's rolling season. So it doesn't say it has to be twenty foot wide and then it has to have some plants in it. So if it's not as detailed, if it has more performance standard to it than, than the county's more detailed, as to the plants you have to put, put away.
But we would require a buffer, yes, sir. Does the county require a statement? Is something that county?
No, it, I said, if we go to a, it was in the, and it says, C dash three, that's just an excerpt from the county buffer requirements, but it didn't, it wasn't attached to the letter, it was returned to the county in response. In the middle of page C dash three, you will see where it said, the buffer requirements and it says tight day buffer.
Right.
And then that's the minimum of twenty feet wide and then one, two, three, four, five. Then the feet, five, three, one. And then the last one, then the air, five, four, three, two, one. So if somebody wanted to preserve a few feet, said, twenty foot, could you put twelve foot wide buffer, states of their land, then they had to put six foot wide.
Well, for that.
Well, it's, they are, they are suggesting that that's what this individual, you, that's really, that's suggestion, right? All right, annexation for it. Okay, all right, not a problem. Questions, Commissioner, for, uh, our city manager, city?
He spoke the other day and tuning on the phone, that's the only person that I had contacted in response to the add in the paper of the word of hosting of the property itself. He had three things that he wanted to mention to you, he said he would attend.
Is he here?
Has he been?
Oh, okay, wait, hold on, hold on. Any questions for, Mr. Blazer?
I, I have a question. Let's go first. The, um, there's an existing fence between subject parcel that's applying for annexation and the Westbury neighborhood. The fence is that?
That is mine.
Sure.
Yes, the, the wooden thing?
Yes.
Yes, that is mine.
So that's on your property. Um, the, the, the trees that are on this side, I mean, there's some quite beautiful substantial trees. They remain as, that's basically what they are.
There is a large little tree towards the front of the property and I really hope it would remain because I think it's in a location where you would not compete with the convenience store itself. I also don't know because its location is in the right of way for East Third Street or the type of property itself that I'm telling them about the action to, I'm unsure if they can reach for it.
It's a, it's a ditch, so there's one on the south between, uh, uh, to the south, uh, but to the north between the fence and the subject property.
I don't recall much of the ditch.
That is the.
Might be here, this is natural. It's dry, it's actually, it's, it's to the highway side of Pittsburgh, so it's very dry. I'm too, that's something I can think of that would be.
The avenue, the avenue of I R S or, or regulations when they, if they're allowed to construct the new convenience store so they won't be able to run any worse.
And then that ditch that was mentioned, the stormwater drainage ditch is not one of the link of the career of property, it's just a partial, sort of looks like.
Now, I forgot fully to mention the ditch. So this is the second time that the county gathered was, there is a ditch that runs along the entire subject property, the convenience store property and also of the, of East Third Street. I'm not sure how far the ditch goes, I imagine it goes back a ways. The neighbor will describe a little bit about the ditch, but the county's, um, request was that the convenience store ran appeasement to the county because the county's ditch. And apparently the county doesn't, we don't claim that in certain periods of time, but they, it was they needed access to the ditch, this was their main leading access to the ditch, at least along the part of the property that is the convenience store today and also the convenience store expanding. And luckily, the convenience store didn't have plans for any structures along their south property boundary, so they were willing to grant access into the, to the county to be able to get to the entire section of ditch that is adjacent to their property today and what hopefully with their property in the future would just be addition.
Right. I'll ask a question. I noticed there was nothing mentioned at all. I noticed there was nothing mentioned at all about lighting. And, you know, convenience stores and gas stations are lit up like Christmas trees. Um, and that, that type of mud to a R nine residential area. Um, my suggestion would be some type of lighting that's either domed or has an eyebrows or that it keeps the lighting down as opposed to out. I did look at the lighting that was in the, out of an elder parking lot. And it's angled away from and towards their side. It's, it's not down, it's not out, it's facing into their property.
We can add a stipulation or provision into the conditional use. For the gas conditional use, attacking that part of it. And we can have some general lighting, simply cannot, they got a little trailer copies and just light up this coffee cellar. There's also one thing that we did use for the Walmart grocery store and their gas pumps. A lot of times, um, the canopy lights end up extending down and they're very bright. So the light shines all right as opposed to just being down. And we required them to put a recessed, this means a canopy, this little glass gole hanging down, causing extra glare. So that would help us direct the light straight in and do something to that.
Okay. Uh, is the avenue... It's like that, it's just easy here, sir. Sir, tell them what you want to do, sir.
Well, we would like, uh, it would be approved, of course. Uh, we want to build a convenience store. We want to, uh, exist in store. We won't tear it down. It's a small facility. It's only about eight hundred and fifty square feet for, you know, side area by watching. It's got great gas presence, uh, but it, it just doesn't accommodate our customer. We're just, we don't have the capacity to, to, uh, to satisfy our customer. Uh, and speaking of the lights, uh, you know, for us, lighting is imperative for the safety of our customers and for the safety of our homeowners. We then just put in the lighting, uh, on that, uh, Perry Land Road. It's got the lighting, it's all, all this recess, that is a big concern these days, with that recess lighting. So we are more informed with, uh, you know, that type of lighting. But, uh, lighting is important, you know, for us. So that's something we, we need to discuss. And, uh, we, uh, you know, we have a big market in the land county and the city of Brunswick. You know, it's a, it's a large market for us. We want to continue to be in the city of Brunswick and, uh, straight from the issue, you know, past. If I can answer any question, I don't know if you had to get that on the line.
Question for Mr. Lake?
Tree canopy.
Ma'am?
The tree canopy, the existing tree canopy.
Yes, ma'am. The, uh, the, the oak tree that y'all were speaking of, on the, the back part of our property, it has the existing tank on it, the underground storage space. And I believe that, that tree you're speaking of is directly behind it, uh, on the Third Street side. And I don't believe it's going to interfere. What we're trying to do, I think we have, uh, the city has some setback standards. Gas canopy right now will be in the same exact spot that it is. It'll probably be torn down and replaced. And the store will sit back or be, be the, uh, current tank on this house under itself. We don't believe that it will be anything. The reason we need the property is because when we carry this thing down and rebuild it, we'll have to raise it about three to four feet elevation. We, we can't go there, we can't go in there, you know, with the, with the, you know, watershed requirements and everything to, to just go in there and tear it down and then rebuild, you know, walk, you know, right there. We're going to have to raise that elevation. And to make it work, we need the problem around us. And of course, to, to back up the, the store. Uh, for us, and I believe, uh, I actually attended a workshop at Arco a couple of years ago about, and I already said the thing, I think y'all have some of them in place. It's for land deals and, 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 uh, uh, the plants and things like that. He has a special notable sign, you know, so we, we all, you know, the departments that go out.
There's a plan, is it mollyed, is it listed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
On the land.
Yes.
I'm a man of the land.
Yes, sir. How long has it been?
Well, honestly, we have three sides in the land county that we're looking at. And we wanted, actually, we wanted to talk about four or five years ago. Unfortunately, one of our stoplights on fifty percent passed away. And, uh, we put everybody on hold. And, uh, about a year after, then his, uh, his there, his wife, she passed away. And we put everybody on hold. So we have three private areas in the county that we want, you know, get started on. Right now, we have a, uh, three oh three, uh, eighty-two. That's the primary. And then second, we wanted to do a street with one by the road. We purchased a Welsh property behind that existing store that's what I live in, the burger, of course, is what we're talking about now. Uh, they're all new facilities, of course, for new facades. Uh, it's not a standard block, split block base built. Uh, we, we spent a lot of money hiring an imaging company to come in and revamp our image. And, uh, we're excited about getting started. Uh, we've just had a lot of things in front of us in our organization that's kind of ridiculous, you know, from getting started. But once we do, we plan to get, uh, all three stores up in about less than two year period. We're, we're hoping to start again here for first, right? So, and of course, you know, there's a lot of things that they take in which, you know, in which order to go. I have another market that needs to be submitted to Silver right now.
How about a local label?
Sir?
Local label?
Yes, sir. We, we tried, I mean, we, we, we have always built our own stores. Uh, and, uh, we actually have a lot of our employees who want some construction companies that are here around. Uh, because of the, uh, the number of stores we want to do, we're thinking about, uh, putting it down to business. And, uh, but, uh, you know, we have a, uh, we put our stores in the county and require a few appointments to... It's, it's, uh, the county and the city of Brunswick, and we did to us. If we, you know, we won't bring any of our other means out, then we, we will.
Any further questions for Mr. Lake?
Uh, uh, I was, they said, uh, really, I'm, I'm actually, I better make Mr. Lake...
No, no, no.
Uh, we're, relax. It's going to be John's call time. I, uh, of course, I have posted it to email and, uh, I filled with, uh, uh, Mr. Frager.
Okay, no problem. Thanks, sir. Okay, um, is anyone here to speak for or against, uh, comments of this petition? Sir, please stand up. Take, take the name and the address now.
My name is Garland Grunberg and my address is thirty-two oh-two East Third Street, Brunswick, New York.
In the neighborhood?
I'm in that, yes. I own, uh, acre and a half of land, two houses attached to the Blackstone. You were talking about what I'm going to talk about. The, I've got actually four considerations I'd like to address before I back to the court with the dump. First of all, is the drainage problem that I was talking about. The digs that, uh, Glendale County is to maintain and extend used to run behind my property thirty-two little days. That's when the house, Whitey Dickson, still lives. Uh, it used to run behind thirty-two, they called it, they called it. And years ago, the county, it wasn't maintained, they wouldn't maintain it. I called them, I said, "Oh, that's the city's problem now." I called the city, oh no, I called Glendale County. I never got that resolved and they never clean the ditch up again. So I'm pretty concerned about that. Everything we have up there is flooded. If you start adding, uh, filler and concrete to what's there now, you're just going to make the problem worse. Uh, I am requesting that due diligence be done to, uh, make sure that, uh, design and implementation, maintenance of drainage is, is wrong. I don't know how else I can, how I can judge that. Oh, we, I don't get their brains, I don't know how I can judge that. So, but if you have a question that you do. The second thing I'm concerned about is I've seen the county's requiring that, uh, the landscape buffer, uh, and I'm requesting a solid fence noise buffer at least eight feet tall. And it's just the lights, I'm requesting the lights should not be set as a shine under my property. I also see that the convenience store is going to have access from Highway seventeen to Glen Avenue and, uh, East Third Street as does now. The problem now is people start to cut across the valley property in the convenience store. There's a gigantic mud hole there now, we have two of those from them trying to stop. I wouldn't look at that when they get this new building. So I'm requesting that, uh, access points be paved and the rest of the, the, uh, property be, uh, buttered and curved. And my last concern is, uh, glitter. Every morning I get up and this is all in my house, all of the down Third Street. There is water dripping, coughing up, cigarette packs. Everywhere, potential, everywhere, just on our parks. Well, I used to go out every one of my last table. I'd make a little survey out there, I'd make myself, uh, six, seven jokes out there back. Now they're going to have to pick it up during the trash. When I started noticing that my, what I'm picking up is actually blowing off the other bill and it's on the fuel on the property. They don't pick their stuff up. So I went over there and asked them if they could do something. Their suggestion was to haul South from waste. I didn't think South from waste was going to have much to do with yard waste. So I didn't call South from waste, I called your co-dinner. He gave no satisfaction. So I would pick it up by tracks too. And I figured if they could get away with it, I'd figure a track track, I knew it when I figured a five way. So when they go to the store, the gentleman said that the store was so many feet down, it isn't how many bigger one was. I think it's four times bigger than the one there now. So you can figure four times as much litter on the road when the store gets complete than it is now. So I don't know what's going to do with my dad. But we will have a pair of rock store out there pretty soon when that store gets up and through back to that. Uh, and I don't know if I can put it up on the other side and actually enforce it. That would probably stop somewhere. But beyond that, I don't know what's going to move to stop that. That's, that's going to be a major, a major problem. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Would you not call that, not record that?
Oh, no problem, no problem. I'll tell you what, I'll just, uh, you.
My question, my question there is, would you like me to enter the city?
Would be what, yeah?
Would you like me to enter the city?
Oh. Actually, what I'd like to do is sell that piece of property. I don't think that that'd be an empty case at all. I don't know, I don't know what you're talking about there.
What you've got to think about, you know, doesn't look awful with the county's state of...
That's true, we, we, we would take that all, okay. I'll call you on that next week and we'll get together and see what happens. Thank you.
That's, uh...
Call me. Thank you. We're a little...
I, I have a question.
You have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Retained, pertaining to your first bullet that you talked about was your drainage ditch.
Yes.
And no one accepting responsibility of it. But I think that you got your, um, resolution to that now because the county is asking for the easement to be able to access it.
I, I, and I...
I think that's efficient.
I, 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 well, I appreciate that. Also, you mentioned that the ditch that is there, if you count you were out there looking at all the, the ditch that is there is, is stuffed with cattails and other aquatic. I don't know whether that's, they might not clean that out, just like within, uh, my property. I'll keep up with that, uh, to my...
Well, you, I think you got it pronounced now because that, that's efficient.
Good.
The next one is, uh, easement is efficient.
Good, 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 good.
So now you know who, you know who to call.
I don't know who to call.
Any other questions for?
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak for, uh, the petition?
Yes, sir.
My name is Dave Laxton from the office. We now have our current residents at three two one zero East Third Street, Brunswick. Uh, thirty-three years ago, we purchased a property with intentions of, you know, our current residence and there have been, you know, some stuffs. And as an investment for our future, the location right off Highway seventeen, uh, next to a, uh, convenience store which was located around two, three, four, fifths. It's our hope that in our golden years, that we can, uh, sell our property and downsize our little arrangements because of our age and status getting tired. And the, uh, crying on seventeen to do five because of the, uh, replacement of store and our home, which is getting over and over. And you're getting over to this Morgan Burger to keep up the maintenance properly and now they used to do. So our request is that you will take that consideration when making your decisions on whether to, uh, agree with the annexation and the rezoning. Uh, and it's our privilege and pleasure to be a person that this two is mayor to the community and the residents. I don't have anything else to say more.
You just want to thank the business, uh, appreciate that, that was so nice.
Yes, ma'am. Any questions?
How, how, how long did you say you've been at the property?
Thirty-three years.
Thirty-three years. So now, it seems as if you are in a win-win type of situation based upon the current market value of the property and then the potential rezoning of that property. So I, I would assume that you all are taking that into consideration, um, that once that rezoning has done, the appreciation that should come along with that.
Yes, sir. Hopefully, the property will be sold. Uh, before the crop taxes, due to the crop taxes two thousand fifteen or next month, and we'll have it back then. And I'm sure that the folks in print for us will be willing to, uh, assist us, Mr. Eric, because, uh, we worked out the bill. But we don't plan to do it here next year, so that will not be our problem, thank you.
Look, I, I would, would guess that if any would want to consider that, being that it was an investment. Seems like it may turn out to be a pretty decent investment at this point. Mr. Freddie expressed.
And more, any questions?
I can give a little, but, uh...
Any questions, uh, question? Sir?
I, I have one question for...
Thank you, we appreciate that. Is anyone else to speak for or against the petition? Have questions, stand, I need you to come back.
Where you're, is the, um, sort of future of Nashmont, is that city limits now?
That is correct.
And all the other pink and, uh, the other areas there are not Nashmont County.
Right, I mean, if you don't, uh, thanks for your zoning map with the overlay. That like a few things, if you go back to page one, that just has an area of... So those properties that have the striking one are, see, everything else...
I just want that there to...
The city of Memphis, man, there is certainly, uh, sound entrance of all the...
The, the problem then is if, let's get south and you're in the county and then you pick up the city. And then the same thing to the north, you know, there's in the county, but then we have more properties to the north of that. So you could, uh, a whole lot of sign the same thing in the city, in the county, in the city, and...
But if you just think about square office, square office, that's one of the main things. We've talked about that for years, haven't anything even...
We have a real good opinion from law, that we do, we do it.
I would think so, sir. Well, you know, we got, any more useful laws now?
That's definitely good.
I don't know, we have a good on that, that timeframe. That doesn't seem bad to me now, like, if we can get them to...
Those points?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think it's a, it's a big job, because you're probably looking at around five hours. We have to look at the area, even neighbors, and count off, there's a lot of counties around my city. And the top have some people around the service. And we can have COVID goes to come out, there's another issue, it's a lesser of our responsibility. So I think it's a big project, but I, I would take it off. Maybe the fact is, the issue is, uh, definitely the issues, and I agree, we should square it off. Very difficult to pull down streets, you know, I'm going to the city area, I was, is the city borough structure still at this house? Or is there's a county that's still out there in the next house? So it's confusing for the citizens, it's confusing for the police, and I think that is a lot of, uh, serious issues.
We're done in that, we're, 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 we're.
Again, the staff is not asking for a vote on the total hearing, but we're asking for you to direct staff to prioritize that ordinance change.
So do we direct staff without a vote, or just go ahead and direct staff?
We need to make a motion to the department, so the next meeting, and then I'm like.
I'm like, I'm moving to the board of directors, we need to go ahead with that.
Second.
Motion second for it to further tighten until our, uh, next meeting. To have had, are there further discussions on it? Have been all those papers waiting right here. Are there motion carries now? All right, uh, thank you very much, move right on to the agenda. Item number seven, to the rule of September ten, two thousand fifteen, question on the media minutes, and September sixteen, two thousand fifteen, regent's committee. Media minutes, uh, make a second rule, and I'll take a motion, I'll take the money for the, for the, for the.
Second.
Motion second for the rule of both special, special meeting, and also the regent's committee meeting, and then further discussions. Sir, have been all those papers waiting right here. And motion carries now to the seat, thank you. All right, item number eight, the civil group of eight street, repair and research, uh, our city engineer, which is the, now the president.
This is, uh, this item for discussion for the resurfacing of eight street between Reynolds and Newcastle Street. That portion of eight street is not a free street, it doesn't go right through to Newcastle Street. And making service as an access for the Europlay building and the former King County Dale site, both King County properties. Um, in, in going out there with this inside, looking at the street, it looks like, basically, there's a lot of utility patches that have been done, and it's got a pretty rough shape. Um, but they probably structurally, the, what's the, that's not simply the shapes, that I think will basically resurfacing will solve the problem. And, uh, take care of what we want to do for repairs there. About eighteen months ago, we put together a cost estimate on that portion of the street, and came up with approximately a cost of ten thousand dollars to resurface that section through. A couple of things about the cost estimate, um, at that time, we had just let a contract for paving at a hundred twenty dollars per ton, for asphalt. Asphalt prices fluctuate, so we, we essentially had a contract for asphalt of about a hundred dollars per ton, so. Hopefully, if we were to, to do that, we can get, get prices around a hundred dollars per ton. Also, that cost estimate does not include incidentals such as contractor mobilization and that thing. If we were to, uh, pay this pre-ducing as a project on its own, we probably would have ended a couple, a couple thousand dollars extra for contracting to bring in his equipment. Whereas if we were to include this project in a larger paving project, we could avoid those costs. So, um, but just strictly for the asphalt to resurface that roadway, I think we're looking at about ten thousand dollars. So, um, the, the options I think we have at that point, at this point, are to resurface the roadway. As part of a paving contract, we, we have a project we need to complete on Johnson and Atlanta Avenue, just get that paid while one of our grain is procured there. So I think we could include this portion under that paving contract and afford those mobilization costs and such. So option one, we could research it, I guess option two would be to do nothing, and, and maybe the third option then would be to transfer that to King County and let them deal with it. I, I don't really, I'm not prepared, I offer a recommendation, but just, just our three options, so I'll tell them. Discussing, how about answering your question?
Mr. Mayor, that may add, this is an item that Commissioner Casey requests that new staff research and come back. I think it's an option to see, because you've got already discussed with the captain, I should add, closing the street and turning it over to someone that will become part of the market facilities. So that's really the true option, whether it has a future reality of the same street, uh, or potentially it should be closed and given to the county with purposes for. So I think that's, that's what the case is working for, an initial condition to turn.
Also, yes, also, Commissioner Casey, this thing, uh, about, uh, you know, we, we are giving up all streets, uh, and we should try to make it out of streets as best we can. Uh, so I think that's one of the reasons why I find it harder to cost as well, so how much cost, lead that out of cost and do. My question to you, uh, you, uh, city, city engineer, that how soon will we, we be, can we start working on this, and we decide to, uh, put this to another project?
Looking to get the, um, the other paving project out and be there, that would be about the end of the year, sir. First of the year, we'd be, be looking at.
So we still be waiting on that, at the same time?
Question, can you ask, how many tons of asphalt are we looking at just for that particular street?
Um, approximately eighty-five, huh? That, that's based on the internet, I think. It is, um, I would like that.
How long would the resurfacing last, approximately? And then, and the reason for my question on that is, eight street, you know, is not a free street. And it sits between the paint building and the now defunct old detention center, which is slated to come down. We don't know exactly what's gonna happen on that property, um, other than a memorial, that, or a memorial park. That sounds like it might be more to the other side of Jason, uh, to a street. I think, I mean, I'm just going to say, I think the S spent the money to resurface it, and then a couple of years later, with the county, shots, we're gonna actually, we'll, 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 we'll consider. And, and then need eight street, or, you know, we spent the money, the meantime, to resurface it, right, and then we're, we're back looking at another decision as to what we would make, uh, this, on that now.
That, that's a good, uh, question there. We can't, uh, I don't know if that, if the county will do with that, with that, uh, jail, jail. But I, I would hate to think that, have been this, that, that they took out jail, that, you know, uh, uh, someone can't, it's a, it's a.
I don't think there would, uh, be a lot, if there are three, they would be a lot.
I know it will be, but then again, it's too, we'd be convinced, that's what they, that we are now.
And what if they, what if there's some questions that you toss around, potential, uh, parking space, or, you know?
Does anybody have a question? How, when the U four house still behind the old four house, did they creep it all the way through behind old four house, did you narrow it?
I, I'm sure some might have, um, I don't know.
It seems to me, if that's an absolute blow of the way that plan of law, and everybody's sitting up here thinks that we should give them that piece of land, or what they want to do with it. We've already given them. Behind the four house, between U four house, so, so, is that not like, we give them that.
That's right.
That is there, is that the street was closed, we abandoned it? Let's proceed?
Let's proceed with caution, proceed with, uh, restitution, or? Retribution.
Uh, restitution.
Physical, physical responsibility.
Physical responsibility.
Physical responsibility. We want to make sure we're free into many other, um, negotiations, and we want to maximize our leverage, so.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I thought, if eight street were to be completed, the curb would be dropped, and one is lower than actually, not looking forward to it. If you were to try to reconnect, it's gonna come out right at the point where three forty-one slips off Newcastle Street, and so it will become a traffic light in America, this is the only road to be used again in the future, so.
Right.
I guess it would make a good intersection, or save the other, improve the curb, but come back out, so we're going to, if we're wanting to jump. So I probably will never leave through street.
Right, I don't think so, and also, maybe, this was one that I had this on, I will show it, uh, uh, meeting that we had today, we're gonna let the city, so, and, and I appreciate, uh, city engineer for giving us those figures, and giving us, uh, what we have to decide here. So, you have a question for, Mr. Allison? Okay, well, we, we have some, I did have some suggestions, options, uh, to abandon eight street, and, uh, let, let county, county, if they can pay it. Uh, we can try to do it ourselves, uh, coming up in January, maybe, or do nothing. I think do nothing is not, obviously, that's what it takes, so, yeah.
Use enough negotiations.
I'm like, I'm moving that we defer until after our meeting, it's gonna be on the thirteenth.
I said.
Okay. Well, we have a question to defer, uh, until after our, our meeting, it's gonna be on the thirteenth.
I said.
Okay. Uh, probably motion second for it to defer by this, until the thirteenth, we should come back, then further speaking, uh, for that first, further discussion. I would like to say that, uh, we, we do need to have physical responsibility, but also need to know that we are, uh, into a new era of county now, and, and being able to learn how to work together. And that there will be some give and take here and there, so we got to understand that, that we are responsible, well, they are, and we will make great decisions as to what's gonna move forward. All right, so any other further discussion? Have been in all those in favor of defer this until, uh, next regent's committee, he's ready. All right, we'll defer that. Thank you, uh, Mr. Allison.
Mr. Allison.
All right, let's move right on, uh, item number nine. Civil group of five to four, as of August thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, uh, city, minus thirty. Bill.
Okay, um, you have a comment, just like, let's say, with August thirty-first, because it's two months into the year. Um, and if you're in the general fund, where the year-to-date, you have a net debt of eight hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, once again, uh, here, the slumming of collections, uh, we'll have another slumming for September, and then we'll see the revenue source pick up now, October, November. And December is property taxes, we'll have another fund that's what we're coming in at that point, too. Cash balance, as of the end of August, in the general fund is a million five hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. You can also see the loss comparisons and the highway law tax comparisons for this month, or this period and last year's period. Year-to-date numbers in loss are down thirty-three thousand dollars, but that's related to the final drop in the loss distribution. Highway law tax is fairly constant with what it was last year, a little bit less. Um, so lost, we had very little activity in March of August, and we spent about nine thousand dollars on stormwater feasibility. You can see we have a cash label balance of two point four million dollars, and you'll see the schedule there that shows what the budget balance is, and what's allocated for, uh, the various projects that we still have outstanding there. And community development admin, there's a cash balance in the regular account of two thousand four hundred forty-three dollars. Seventeen thousand dollars was then put in a special account, that was a restricted donation, and we received for the parts. And so, we have a total there, uh, a little over twenty-one thousand dollars. Expenditures year-to-date, eighteen thousand, we will see some money coming in from city, we'll title them up soon, or reimburse us for salaries that are paid out of city admin. The Roosevelt Harris multiple purpose center had revenue so far of sixty-four thousand dollars, as opposed to expenditures of fifty-one thousand. There's a cash balance of seven thousand dollars, that's at that point. The revenue is placed to be made up with grants, thirty-six thousand dollars, and transfers in from the general fund, twenty-five thousand, approximately three thousand dollars in program income. General fund, very little activity, there's a balance of twenty-nine thousand dollars in that account. Community development federal fund, also, um, there's balance of almost four thousand dollars. The only thing that's been spent is forty-five hundred dollars on the elderly disabled program, and then twenty-seven hundred dollars on volunteer expenditure for food, for the volunteer breaks we came in during the summer. Sykesville recapture has cash balance of hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. There's been no activity out of that fund at all this fiscal year. North Street Commons has cash balance of three hundred and eighteen thousand, once again, there's been no activity in that fund for this fiscal year either. Sanitation fund, revenue year-to-date, two hundred and eighteen thousand, compared to expenditures of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. And our cash balance in sanitation of seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, and a restricted cash balance in another account of two hundred and two thousand dollars from the sale of the equipment. Uh, there's no control expenses, or traffic control expenses for year-to-date, waste management bills, grant total paid for the month of August, eight two thousand dollars. Grant total year-to-date, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, that remains generally pretty much the same, year, month, month. And you have the recreation and neighborhood services. You'll see the August transactions and year-to-date transactions, we paid out some insurance for the building, that's been given, um, August. And you'll see my column here, in August transactions, it has all the date numbers under recreation, summer camp, program. Think I mentioned that to y'all last month, where those expenditures, expenses will be in charge to the wrong account, they weren't really budgeted numbers, so what I did is, I had my manager know them, and they were awesome now, they're under neighborhood and community service. Which is where the expenditures were budgeted to. So, that's, um, those have all been moved. And so, in neighborhood and community service, we'll see, we've had a grant code of, uh, twenty-seven thousand, or twenty-eight thousand dollars per the month, compared to year-to-date numbers of forty-two thousand dollars. And it's, has been expended out of neighborhood services, and that's mostly for the, um, salaries in that program. And it's been expended by Neighborhood Services and that's mostly for the, um, salaries in that program.
Any questions?
Uh, my question is, is Bill?
I have my question for you. And then I was looking maybe ask my question is what, what have we all made with waste management? Because, uh, we're charging for this, uh, our cost thing going down, but our services don't go down.
I think we probably make some improvement on what you said. We still have a problem out there. Um, I think they're going to do some catch up. And definitely, I mean, you have a sister, I'm not sure you have a chance to have a lot of them. But we, we, I think you'd say that you're just so proud of yourself. Let me brief you something. Good brief.
Yeah, we, we have got a report that I've got to go through right now. I have Becky run for me today. It's gonna have some numbers on it, uh, and we'll try to make some comparisons with previous months and see where we're at.
I do know that we're in an education program for that. We haven't seen that yet. They told us in our meeting that we'll put together a community education about the next piles, not the, uh, copper drum and less developed piles. And they're, they're, so as part of it.
They didn't give a call?
Time to do that? I'm sure.
They didn't give us an exact time frame. They didn't know. That's something we need to check back with more.
I want to see some of this big problem I need within this thirty, sixty day window. Should I, should we still do that?
Maybe we could kind of all roll it together and do another track roundup with the, um, you know, the three sides with the, the raw dumpster and sort of, sort of the educational component as far as that whole thing. Getting, getting most educated on what you can put on the curb, what you can, and, uh, I know they are a little more aware too of what's, because they, they send me emails when I forward them to them generally. When they can't pick up something because there's some kind of blocking in the road or something like that. So they're very aware of that. And they send us an email and say we couldn't pick up something such because, you know, it was blocked or something's going on.
No, sorry, I have a question. Yeah, sorry. Uh, Kathy, uh, you said you put in no activity inside of your capital account, like to the North Street Congress. On, uh, that's because of, is it starting on fiscal year?
Well, yeah, as a function of that, I think, um, you know, some of these things that we have located inside of Recapture. A lot of that money is going to be going to the cleanup with, um, George Pacific and, uh, so we have had to, you know, just spend in with that money, yeah. But most of what we've budgeted coming out of this fund that this year is to pay for that. And so I guess we'll fix them and see some money left there. And North Street Commons, um, I guess I, I don't know. I don't know if there have been any projects that we've really decided what we're gonna do. And I know it has to be in a certain geographic area and, um,
Can we put aside what that geographic area is? Because nobody really seems to know.
And I don't think it really spelled it out. It just sort of says the cemetery, some of the cemetery.
Okay, uh, uh, another question is, uh, uh, Page Two, uh, storm drainage improvement, uh, block five. For seventy million dollars. We got a fence seventy.
We have adjusted the minimum budget, seven million dollars, seven point five million. We have expended so far seven point one million, which is, so now we have this three hundred and eighty one or eighty ten thousand there. Which is what's gonna go for this, the, um, Mansfield Street. Mansfield Street, yeah. And, uh, we also will have some money coming back in for that. Um, because the stormwater feasibility study, we can apply this month of October for sixty five thousand dollars grant money that we are to get. But we had to wait until October to apply that.
We want to ask about that, but, um, there's a concern about we allowing to breathe more than stormwater without drains and such. And I know that question came up and, and still, so like, not being addressed does not do a part. Uh, but, uh, I see we spent all our money on stormwater, on drainage improvement. And we allow them to continue to, to happen. So like we are building something, fixing something, then allow us to go back to that part.
Yeah, I can, um, I can give you the numbers and what projects we spent that money on, you know, which areas of the city it's been spent on, but arrow I guess it has to be one together, a little more depth.
Okay, well.
Um, that's fine. But I can tell you, yeah, that's money we've spent on various parts.
Yeah, let's, let's get that, uh, and on next meeting, uh, so we can figure out that something. So that's what I can leave to put on our next meeting. Stormwater, uh, projects that you have in spot, spot five. She's gonna give you, um, projects completely.
What, we split up that seven million?
And also, uh, you know, what's being done now as we, we may just go on with the storm water drainage issue happening now. Do you have a, uh? Sure. Um, and I've been talking about my next meeting, um, and, you know, Page Two, the, uh, Mary Ross Park, uh, infrastructure, uh, that's that we have two hundred and nineteen thousand off of the, we, 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 that part. Then a hundred and eighty thousand off that set aside, which hasn't been used. I'm trying to figure out what that is.
Yeah, I was sitting there and I was discussing that the other day and, uh, there's nothing real on, for me to tell you other, you know, what specifically, I don't know, I wasn't here at that point. So I don't know specifically what they were thinking of and do with that money. Because I can't find any paperwork that says it just had rest, hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But I haven't been able to find anything that says what they were intending to. Although, well, I'll take that back. I know there was some things for some bathrooms, I think they only mentioned the two bathrooms up on the second floor, maybe.
They, they were looking down at the second floor and they said, some point they might miss improvements to the stadium area because the theater was so old, it wasn't designed on a modern theater. But I think we, one of the things we discussed, the Asian building, and I don't know the history of the roof. But maybe some of them were set aside, the, the size of the building, this roof, maybe the size of the roof was lost in the air.
I know it needs repairs now because Eric had given us some numbers about a hundred and a half.
Or at least the fashion, it might be that they did the size on one of them. So we'll take that thing out.
If we can help our, 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 well, I guess that's not really bad in City. But, I mean, is, are there not some other grants that we could apply for the full renovation, the second, third floor of the building?
You're referring to the front section of the building, the admin, the central, the, the, the L section, uh, without, uh,
Yeah, the second and third floor.
Um, yeah, I don't know. It's actually could be because they need to build it and I don't think you could do that. I guess the question's going to be used for. Again, there's quite a space on the second and third floors. You go with an elevator and then just office space. It'd be, uh, one time as we design, I'm sure, third or fourth, they'd set up as a parking station. Third location, two of them. So it's, uh, it's gonna need a lot of work, which quite a good space.
Yeah.
So we're serving, and, and those ones can be used as a match. But often those grants are gonna be served for renovation.
I can say, you mentioned, which, uh, there is, you know, we've talked about Mary Ross Park and the dock. And we did have that dock fund that's set aside separately. I think there's about ninety two thousand dollars in that fund. So it's also, are we, are we, are we seriously now pursuing the short, uh, plan? Does we, we have some place, place as a waiting room?
I don't think we're ready for the contract. It's expensive, it's looking at costs and error.
Kathy, if the lady doing the contract, who's doing the, you know?
Yes, force. I'm not sure, yeah, I've seen, was there a possibility for porters to be doing some work in that same area? If we, if we change the order, maybe we can work with them, you know, and then include our, but I don't know what's happening right now.
But we're already approved, uh, and, uh, Mary Ross.
We, uh, our first year, we, we have, we, we had that.
We have a design, uh, correct.
Not yet, we're, not, not a natural design, uh, not a designer. This was, this was a, this was, yeah, I think it's, it's, uh,
The first phase of Mary Ross Park, um, after planning, we did assessment of existing facilities. And we had a structural engineer, uh, surveying, I mean, to assess the other village, the village that was looking for it, the dock. He didn't know that. They provided us, it was gonna be nine thousand dollars. Just to kind of put it back, that's, put a bit of that for the use that was intended for each twenty year, four to one. So they did, they fielded beyond dock, required about three hundred thousand, three hundred five thousand dollars. Rebuilding of the dock.
Three hundred fifty thousand.
Three oh five, I remember correctly. And then the port, it was about two years ago. So we do have that assessment. We could pass that assessment along to, uh, whatever other companies that have, uh, or in the area.
But that went for any additional improvement. That's why the access to that just prepared and.
That was structured. They came along on the nice, nice of using the white head, uh, simply building, uh,
Did they, sure, sure. Sorry, I was gonna say, is there any specifications that we put into a pack to get out the end of the contract? I'm not sure we've got a lot of more details. They don't believe you and we've got a lot of contracts. So.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to know where you are, if you're, if you're assuming personally these things that we've been tossing around.
It sounded like there's enough money in the dock fund and the spots to actually accomplish the rebuilding. The question is, do you, would you rather try to use the money that you have to leverage more, even brand or some other funding? That's the problem. You don't know what's necessarily that will get from the way that you're spending what you have now. Or if you want to try to leverage it and pour some other money.
I, I think probably leveraging will be a good thing, but, uh, we don't wanna wait another two or three years and still, uh, buy leveraging money. We want to be aggressive and, so you say you put one down, you want to get this stuff done.
Not gonna be way over that, uh, with the, here. I agree.
Uh, can I do this? Away from the, Mayor Ross. Um, have we had anything as far as our expenditures, uh, for, um, counting, anticipating? And have that in? Do we have anything, I do, or, 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 or?
Uh, for the, um, Lots of years, athletes, scholarships.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that's available. Yeah.
More consideration.
Yeah, uh, whatever you should, you, you may get a, a, a shot. I'll call that. Can we call Master?
Call your, your, your.
You ready to, uh, I'm ready for this. Sure, wait. I need most of the others to be able to define that, uh, and, uh, all of us. Most of second one of, approved on finance from before that August, two thousand fifteen. And, and further discussion? Is being all the same situation right now. Okay, that most carries now. We'll stay on there. I want to, uh, give you this, uh, this plaque I called it, this heading. Very, uh, this, yes, the Government Finance Office Associated Certificate of Achievement of National and Finance Reporter. Been to this video project and mainly Jordan Park. And I really appreciate, I wish I sort of done, everybody, I would say, so they could see exactly what was going on.
We don't have the space to even watch the park.
I have to take that. But anyhow, you know, if you want me to hold on to it for a while, hold on to it, I can put it in the next mention.
Now, I would say, I would say, oh, you're giving it to her now, but just like you recognize the fire department, I think you should recognize the finance department. Get, get fun of.
Okay, bring, bring all your files, okay? Okay, that's what we do.
She got the snake pretty.
You have, sir. All right, next on the agenda is, uh, I'll see the attorney. Item number ten, consider two of the events that happened between I and J, Street for Fairtime, for effective park.
Yes, uh, Mayor, please. Uh, this, we have a quick, uh, prepared, um, since the last meeting, uh, as commissioning, uh, we were directed. Nick, the county attorney's office, we discussed the conveyance, uh, of the alleys between I and J. You can see that the, uh, quick, uh, we prepared has the illustrations attached, identifying each parcel. Uh, and that's, the base is being done, has some restrictions, um, by the city. Although, uh, motion or vote, we think it's, uh, we want to include it, probably close it with the alleyways. Thought they could close it till the night, or prior regarding jail being moved. Uh, I could not find a minute where it actually, they actually been closed, uh, till we closed it, uh, though it would be included in the motion.
So, and also the transfer?
Correct. And it's kind of like, it'll be under the second, uh, I'm sorry, first address.
Okay, any questions, Josh, Andrew?
Uh, there is one point I want some clarification on is when the execution of the D would be taking place. And we just discussed that the D would go, we were conveying, the city was conveying the alleys for the, for more of our construction. Is this an immediate conveyance? The tonight's vote was to approve the D, um, and prepare to be conveyed or signed by the mayor for immediate conveyance.
Oh, I, I think our special was not putting any restrictions on that.
Sorry. Sorry.
So, and we, uh, we've managed to do it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion if we're, we're, there's a, uh, make a motion to close the alleys, um, as specified and listed in these parcels. And then to transfer, um, as soon as possible to Lake County, to County.
Second. What's the second? For the closure of, uh, alleys and also, uh, for the transfer of the property to Lake County. Are there any further discussion? I think we have discussed this quite a bit. I, I mean, I think, uh, understand the stipulations and the ramifications concerning this transfer and also, uh, closing the street. So, that being said. City clerk.
Commissioner Mark, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Kathy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proctor, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, I'm most in care of you, Anderson. So thank you so very much. We think, I think you stood here again for item number ten, Dave.
Yes. Um, we get a, before you can apologize, uh, for this being the report part for the press conference today. Uh, we are, of course, part of the T Street cleanup with Ricky Lee's or Ashland Incorporated in George Pacific. Um, they are a burden of course by us, uh, the same trick as the city had come for you. At a commissioning over two weeks, so they're able to execute agreements the day that they're presented. Um, this, as per agreement, if you recall, a month ago, you approved a, uh, amendment to the cost sharing agreement for the cleanup of the T Street property. Um, that amendment allowed for us to name a party representative, essentially a sole, uh, single source where all three parties are represented.
Um, that amendment allowed us to name a party partner, that ended essentially a sole, uh, single source, where all three parties represented by King's Falling, that's the ball from out of Atlanta. Um, King's Falling is not owned by Ashland Esco, but has, uh, now the authority of the amendment, that cost sharing agreement, to name an Esco agent, and, uh, they have actually, Georgia Pacific, and, uh, King's Falling worked through competitive, sort of bidding process to select, around, I recall, CPA firm called The Maximus Incorporated, um, they, their slogan to us is that they're costing, uh, uh, they will, like, to have a very small role in just maintaining the funds and trust, and paying any assistance that presented by King's Falling. Um, the one thing that they did in this, about this community Maximus, what they wanted to do, uh, in terms of the Esco agreement, is also, through the parties, city, Georgia Pacific, and Eric, is on all communication of going in and out of, uh, the CPA firm to the representative, to King's Falling, so, it's going to still be a transparent process, and one of the things that's going on is the Esco agent, as well as the party representative of King's Falling. Uh, but we do need to name, uh, an Esco agent fairly quickly, uh, and what's it will be, will be coming shortly, I think Captain's broken earlier, that there'll be sizable, uh, amount of, uh, maybe, this Esco, uh, uh, Esco agent for each party. Probably towards the end of the year, because they're gonna start, um, having consultants, you know, uh, preparing, uh, the second.
Are we willing to vote?
Yes, we are. One of their, we were sharing, one of their.
So, we're needing to make a decision and vote on the actual Esco agent?
That's correct.
And, we're deciding, and our companies have already agreed to.
Utilized. Subject to this, uh, but we would, city, parent, to recommend, for us, if we can, given us, or allow them to be, uh, set up.
Not possibly indebted, and they, or, all, like, it's a whole, that's, you know.
You're looking to get first, to get Esco agreement, there's certain, uh, requirements, uh, that they have to be, um, the long term credit rating, if they, plus, that's a good pitch, or anyone who's prepared, so yes, they've been thoroughly, uh, brought to us for approval. Georgia Pacific owns the property, so, although the city bears some liability, they, they really are, are attempting to run the show, so they can get cleaned up, they, sort of, areas run, so they, they actually, um, uh, but we want to protect the city, don't we?
There's a reason too, I see, uh, compensation for Esco agents, uh, comes out at, uh.
That's correct.
And, yeah, I know, hell, I don't know, they are, they are, they're, by the case.
There's certain items that could be identified against, uh, because of, sort of, a unique situation with those three of the parties, um, the extent that the law allows it, those other parties can identify the CPA, or the city owner, cannot identify any party. That's based on still laws, so, that calls me, but mostly related to the two private corporations, the parties.
Okay, questions for the city attorney? We have approved, uh, using, um, we have approved, this, uh, Esco agent, we have approved for, for, to get an agreement with the three of us, so, so we did that last time, okay?
I got one question, uh, what little reports that you're talking about, uh, will be, will be, in fact, permission for, I'm sorry, what little reports, or transactions? Even like those we provide, we, then we absolutely did that.
So, did you check that, did you ask, have you checked them out?
Have I personally checked them out? We, they didn't, uh, we didn't send to, uh, us personally, since the, since King's Falling, we need the party representative, King's Falling took the share of, then you have CPA, uh, era, Tennessee, right, King's Falling seems to have a big relationship with them, so they have recommended that.
Longly, right?
We are, yes, but, again, it needs to be deferred, you know, they, they not understand, uh, the law, I've had to explain to them, the city, you know, where we run, it needs to be presented to the board, typically, I'm looking at it, the thing for, but, if it needs to be deferred, you know, to a further, I don't know.
Would they have to disclose that there was some, um, advantage to King's Falling for recommending?
That, I do not have the, the answer to that.
So, this, we, we were not normally do this, and we had, uh, now, diligence on that.
Well, we're not in a situation where, since we're one of three parties, and we're not the owner of the property, but we share some of the liability, no, that's typical of you, but if we own the property and board the run of the liability, we would be essentially steering the, uh, uh, here, not being the owner of the property, and together, two other private corporations, they can utilize some of their, the ability not to be, unless some restrictions, the city will be, kind of, like.
So, your recommendation, man?
Would be to approve the Esco agreement, if the board sees it.
Okay.
Yes, gotcha, I'll need to look up.
All right, question, the servant, commissioner? If not, I need to take a motion, please.
I'll make a call, because if we, uh, view the, uh, firm that King's Falling had recommended us, or, uh, throw the custody, the maximum, for, for you.
My second.
All right, I'm most second for, uh, for the proof, for us to use King's Falling, um, slice of the Maximus, eat, as, uh, as Esco agent. Uh, then further discussion.
We're, we're agreeing to, uh, uh, enter into this, uh, other, other parts.
And they will, the, the second, they can see all the party, uh, so.
Again, further discussion, sir, being the all of the faith, the face, I can. Thank you, we'll move on, uh, carriers, Anderson, all right.